All right, we have seven o'clock. Would you rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a forum. It's nice to see a full house like this. This is pretty cool. We don't get this as often. Uh, something I don't know about. Uh, thank you. Thank you all for attending. Uh, council, we have approval of meetings from January 2nd. Look at them, any additions, subtractions?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second. Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed. Let's start with the public meeting and the Endeavor Fiber update with Jay Watkins. Hi, Jay.
Hello. Good evening. Uh, Jay Watkins, Vice President, Operations with Endeavor Communications. Come here to give a brief update on the fiber project. So, um, in your packets, you should have kind of that first initial marketing plan for the strategy to roll out to the community. Um, still, any feedback that you guys have on that, please send that to either Laura or myself and, and, um, we'll be happy to, um, work that in however, whatever, any of those suggestions would be appreciated. One thing that we are looking for is, is kind of that wow factor when we come into town here. So, um, looking for suggestions from the town council as well on things that we can work with, um, not things, but, uh, whether it be the school, churches, um, some of the things that go on here. So, hey, um, for every customer that we get on this service, we're going to donate 5% or whatever that percentage is to, maybe it's the, uh, the band club, the athletic department, whatever that may be. So, um, just looking for suggestions there. Um, when we come to town, we want to get as many folks on this as we possibly can. Um, so any feedback on that would be greatly appreciated as well. Um, as far as the project, so far, we've got our website up and going here for the town. Uh, we encourage folks to go to join.wendeavor.com. Let us know you are interested in services and, um, we've had 47 hit that site already with really no advertising, no anything going on just yet. So, uh, we look for that to continue to grow, especially once we start hitting with the newspaper, the radio, the billboards, all of that. Um, and then door to door will come in, um, once we've kind of softened the market with that. Uh, the Barry Knoll subdivision, that will be the first area that we build to this spring. The engineering is underway, um, for that project. Uh, that probably will take 30 days. We'll have that wrapped up, I would say. Um, and then once weather breaks, we're going to begin building, um, that addition. We've probably got about 30 days of construction there, I would say, in that area, and then we'll be ready to start converting those folks over to, um, the gigabit network that we'll be, uh, putting in place. Um, we are doing a small project with Hendrick's Power right now. It started over in New Winchester. We'll, we're building over to the substation just off of Lincoln Avenue. Um, we are in the middle of that project. Um, in the rural and in town, um, we had 82 locations sign up for services with a good portion of those being in the rural area. Um, and it's kind of the same thing. The mainline construction on that is, is getting near to completion and then we'll come back through once weather permits, um, to place the, the drops up to the houses. So, and begin converting those folks over as well. So, uh, we did hit a water line last week. That was our fault, our crews that were out there. Um, we do apologize for, for that and any of those bills. Uh, please send those over to us. We'll gladly take care of those. So... So, yeah, that's what we do. So, um, questions from the council?
Got anything?
Have you done any marketing at Clear Creek, which is probably our biggest neighborhood in town?
We have not. We haven't done any marketing yet, so...
I thought that's what you said.
Yep.
Cause you're close there with you on Lincoln and...
We're right around the corner there.
And then thank you so much from not just the people in Danville, but the people that grew up here that don't live here anymore for, you know, helping to broadcast our football season like you did towards the end when people, it was very cold and very rainy and a lot of people stayed in and, uh, we greatly appreciate you, you know, broadcasting that.
Well, there's more of that to come, so that was just kind of the, the, um, dipping our toe in the water there and so, so we do a lot of these football games. We do a lot of basketball games, volleyball games, and I don't remember which game it was. I believe it was the final one, that the weather was just not good at all. We had over 5,000 folks watching that game at one point in time. That's some of the largest numbers we've, we've ever seen. We had folks in Alaska watching that game. We had folks in Europe watching that game. It was insane to see where everyone was watching, watching that. It was, it was a big deal. So, um, by far, one of the largest views that we've ever had.
Is there somewhere we can sit and see who's watching it, like you know?
Um, we can share that information with you. It's kind of a live look that we've got into, into that, but, uh, we'd be more than happy to share some of those maps with you guys if you'd like to see where all those views came from. So, we can get the data, you know, was it watched on a cellphone? Was it watched on an iPad? Was it watched on a, on a smart TV or whatever it may be? So, um, we can kind of see about everything. So, we did have some technical difficulties. I apologize for those. We were using a wireless connection. By this time next year, uh, or by the time football season rolls around, we'll have our fiber into there. We've been communicating with the schools on what we need to do to ensure that we're not relying on a wireless signal going forward. So, that'll clean a lot of that up.
I didn't hear any complaints and I think we were just lucky to see it, so...
Yeah, well, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, good.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right.
Good work.
Oh, yeah. So, we did get, uh, I apologize, I forgot to mention that. So, I went and, uh, met with the county commissioners this month and we did get approved to attach the wireless, um, onto the front of their, of the annex building on the square. So, that'll be rolling, um, here. So, by spring, we'll have, uh, a free wireless network to anybody that's down there. So, uh, everything that you guys have going on down there, anytime anyone is there, they'll have 100% coverage around that area.
What kind of...
It's all line of sight. So, it'll start there at the annex and then it's going to shoot to the north side, kind of in there by the Mulberry Cafe, and then to the south side, and then from there, it'll beam all the way around. So, if you can see those antennas, you'll get, um, service, but it's 1,500, 2,000 feet, something along those lines. But trees kill it, buildings kill it, any of those things. So, yep, we're excited to be here, so...
Sorry to have you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Downtown Danville Partnership Annual Report, Bill Sutton.
Nice warm night tonight, I think. Uh, Bill Sutton, Downtown Danville Partnership. Uh, in your packet, you had the, uh, review that we put out of the activities that we did this year. I think, uh, we didn't do new activities, but the activities that we do every year grew like crazy. I think Mayberry in the Midwest was extremely successful. Uh, Summer Sounds was also a lot bigger than we've had in the past. The, I think the thing that goes under the radar screen almost is the Scarecrow Festival. The number of people that come into town just so that they can walk around the square when the weather's nice in October, uh, to the point where, uh, that would be something that, uh, in terms of the amount of effort that we put into it, the amount that we get out of it is, uh, is probably our biggest return on what we do and sponsor. Uh, so that's, uh, you know, First Friday is Christmas on the Square. We replaced the, uh, February Valentine's Day with the Sweet Saturday. But our other statuses for coming up, uh, we had, uh, retreats scheduled for last Friday, which was postponed due to the weather. So, hopefully, we'll be able to do that to get our specifics on what we're going to do for next year. But in general, uh, we're expecting to begin to work with Main Street USA. We're doing some investigation on affiliating with them. Uh, many of the towns around here, Coatsville, uh, Bloomington, number of other places work with them. So, that should be able to help us grow our programs and expand our programs, not just continue to do the same things we have. Uh, we're expecting to expand our facade grant program because that has been extremely popular and useful. Uh, we zeroed out our funds last year and had some requests still in the pipeline when that happened, so we're expanding what we're doing with that. Uh, the biggest thing I think that we've got this year is our Executive Director, Krista Miller. Uh, the amount of work that she did to help us move forward and be able to do everything, avoiding our volunteer burnout because she took over our administrative functions on so many things. And in particular, a lot of the things that cost us X amount of money, cost us X minus 10 to 15% this year because of her ability to work with, uh, checking to make sure we were getting the best deal on everything we did. So, I think as a group, we wanted to thank her a lot for her survey. I'm glad she's here, so I can talk about that.
Yes, she is.
Um, and, uh, our request, uh, that we wanted to make for the budget for next year is $80,000, same as our previous years, and I hope that we've been able to show that that's been a good investment for what we're doing with the downtown. Do you have any questions or comments?
Good, we budgeted $80,000 for this year, so...
How do you guys feel about $80,000?
Wonderful job. Definitely.
We approve the $80,000 going forward for 2018.
Motion and a second to approve the $80,000 Downtown Danville, uh, coming from the host?
No, I'm sorry. It does not come from the host.
Where's it come from?
It comes from the edit.
It comes from...
It comes from host? Okay. I have down. Okay, all right. I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
Burrows from spinning.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're okay and clear on this, right?
Oh, yes. It does, yes. That's significant where it comes from, but we're, well, I'll double check, but we're good. Yeah, we have the $80,000 budgeted, so...
So, we have a motion and a second for $80,000 for the Downtown Danville. All in favor, signify. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you all very much. Hope we can continue to give good reports every year when we come back.
Thanks, Bill.
Yes.
All right, well, we might as well keep going. Let's, uh, let's hear from Peg Glover with the Chamber of Commerce.
Hi. Did, um, all of you get our annual report? Right here? Okay, and what about our proposed budget? Thank you. Good evening. My name is Peg McRoy Glover and I am with the Greater Danville Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here tonight representing the chamber staff, the board of directors, and 193 business leaders who are members of the chamber. We have provided you a copy of our 2017 annual report and our proposed budget for 18. The chamber continues to do good work for the business community and the community at large. Just to name a few, we do educational workshops, networking opportunities for its members, such as bimonthly informal coffee meetings, formal informational meetings monthly. We offer a state-of-the-art, interactive website for the use of the membership. And then, of course, we do the Saturday morning farmer's market, the family Fourth Fest, a park concert, and a successful winterland. We anticipate a very successful year in 18. So, I'm willing to take some questions now.
I heard, uh, there was thoughts about having tribute bands in the park. Uh, that's, uh, possible?
Yes, it is possible.
And how often would you have them?
Well, there's supposed to be six, I believe, in the summertime.
Okay.
And, uh, I think three tribute concerts and three films, and the chamber will be working with, um, the Parks Department.
Sounds exciting.
Sounds very promising.
Sounds exciting.
And very exciting, and it will be free to the public.
And the symphony, uh, they used to tell us what they were going to play?
They, yeah, they...
And tell us when we could hear it?
Right.
And deal with them?
We, at this point, have reached a, a point of, uh, a broken negotiation because every year, they increase the price. Last year, we paid 29,500 just to get them here. That didn't include the RV we had to provide for the maestro or all the food and the water and everything we have to do to set up, and they don't help us market, and they've become almost impossible to work with.
I think I'd like the tribute bands better.
I think I will too. I think this will be, and it'll be free.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
The problem with, uh, doing the symphony is it's so expensive that we have to charge at the gate. We do, we do raise a lot of sponsorship money, but it's not enough to cover. So, but I, I think this is going to be a wonderful thing, thing for the town of, um, Danville and the surrounding community, and it's going to be a good thing, I think, for the Parks Department and the chamber as well. Because with the symphony, we have to dedicate a lot of resources toward one night, just one night. Sure. Okay, well, at this time, I'd like to make a request on the behalf of the board and the directors and the staff and the members for an approval on funding this year.
Okay, how much would you like?
I'd like to have $45,000. Yeah.
It's budgeted.
Budget from the edit.
Budget from the edit. I would agree with that. Budget from the edits.
Okay, good.
It is.
I have a, a motion to approve the $45,000, uh, fund to the Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the $45,000 coming from Edit to the Greater Danville Chamber of Commerce for the year 2018.
And I have a quick second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. That ensures that we can continue doing the good work that we do through the chamber. I would also like to take this opportunity to address the location of the chamber office in the town hall. The board has been aware for a long time about concerns regarding this matter, so the board is actively pursuing the relocation of the Chamber of Commerce offices. We are in active discussions with the local business to make that move. I was hoping to come before you tonight with a solid timeline. However, due to weather and scheduling conflicts, we have not been able to nail that down, but we will be doing that soon. But please rest assured that we are making every effort to make this happen in, in hopes that this will ease any of your concerns. So, I thank you for this opportunity to speak with you and for your consideration.
Can you share that location with us?
I can't.
Could you share it with someone?
I don't think that would be fair to, uh, the business that we're dealing with right now.
Michael, all you have to do is look on chatter.
You're going to find this hard to believe, but I let my students do that. I don't have time for that. They could tell you in the morning, "Yes, you're students."
I mean, everybody, yeah, but I think in, in fairness, that I should keep that off the public record.
Fair enough. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Laura. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Laura, Strategic Plan Mission Statement Adoption.
Comes back to you tonight for adoption. It was presented to you in December for your consideration, and several of the members of the Strategic Plan Steering Committee are here. If you could raise your hand if you're on that committee. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. And then, of course, myself, Gary, Marcia, and Tom are also represented on that committee as well, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have prior to adoption.
Any questions? I go ahead and read this for those people?
Please do, thank you.
And I could try and zoom in a little bit.
All right. In the meantime, the mission statement. The mission of the town of Danville is to proactively plan for future growth to enhance our hometown and unite the community. Vision, Danville is committed to sustaining its hometown heritage while advancing its quality of life. Values, visionary, leadership and planning, collaboration, excellence, professionalism, quality of service, continuous improvement, integrity, responsible, ethics, transparency, open and honest communication, authentic, atmosphere, commitment. Thoughts?
I would move that we accept the mission, vision, and value statements that have been presented to us by the Strategic Planning Steering Committee.
A motion, you have a second? Second. Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, by the way.
And just to add to that, we are planning on having a public input session, tentatively scheduled for February 5th. It'll be here at Town Hall, we expect.
Yep.
It'll be in the, um, like an open house from like four to eight, so, um, I will communicate finalized details. I hope to hear that today, but we didn't get it nailed down yet. So, that's tentative. And then we would like to schedule a work study with council prior to that meeting date in order to review with you the recommendations from the steering committee.
Ed Jordan, ladies and gentlemen. Is that your wallet? Ed, I have, I need to know, was that...
I'm grabbing it.
Ed, Ed, was that police or fire that you knocked down?
That was the IAC door.
Oh, okay. Uh, just checking. All right.
It's okay.
Happens. All right. So, you're looking at a work study, you're thinking February 5th is... A lot of time.
I know you like to do them before council meetings when possible, so possibly the Monday before, which would be, what, February 2nd?
February 5th is the...
5th is the council meeting.
Work study. February 8th would be the open house. Pardon me, I have it backwards.
Okay, February 8th is the open house. Work study. Jim, how are you on that?
I have plenty of time.
Anybody else?
Mm-hmm.
Need two hours for that?
Mm-hmm. There's a lot to talk about.
What do you think when I say...
Jim, how are you on that?
Yeah.
Guys, did anybody have a conflict?
I'll feed you.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. February 5th, the work study, February 8th, the, uh, open house-ish.
There are seats up here if you want to sit down.
Okay. Uh, the water tower painting project, Mr. Russell.
Good evening. Jim, I have Kent LA with me.
Jim and Kent Show.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, we, uh, been working with, uh, Banning Engineering as, uh, putting together plans and specs for, uh, painting of the North Elementary Water Tower. Kent's going to, uh, update us on where we need to go and what step we're at next.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Um, we've, uh, looked at the, the tank and we had them inspected earlier last year, and the priority tank was the North Elementary tank, as we found out, needs to be taken care of, not only the, the recoding, but just the updating of, from the OSHA standards. So, we'll be doing some welding and removing and taking off ladders, so a little, uh, more than just doing a, a recode on that. But, uh, with that, we're going to wait and we're actually going to have the contractor start as soon as school's out, so that way, we're not affecting the, the students or the classes or anyone at the, at North Elementary. And we'll wrap up any of the painting and coating systems before school comes back into session. We'll probably have some punchless items, but not painting after school's back in session in August. I think it's August 8th. Is that correct, the fall? Like that?
I'm just trying.
I think it is. Um, but we are going to go ahead...
Dr. Schaefer, is Dr. Schaefer still here? My boss?
Okay. Thank you. Um, but we are going to go ahead and...
It's kind of awful early. Oh, yeah. This is...
We were, we were hopeful that we were going to just, um, have to get quotes on this, but, um, looking at it more in our, our cost estimates, uh, we are going to be a little over that threshold for public bidding, so we will put out for public bids, uh, first of the month, and we'll do the, the two, uh, public bidding to satisfy that state requirement. And we're looking at bidding it, um, opening the bids on February 19th, I think is the, the second board meeting in February.
Go ahead.
Yes. Yeah, we'll, we'll work with you. Whichever ones that we want to advertise those in, we'll, we'll do that.
20th?
20th, yeah. Um, that is about it right now. Um, we are looking, I know, at the other tanks and getting, getting those, uh, maybe partnering with, um, with the hospital possibly on that. So, I know they're looking at that internally, um, but right now, we're just proceeding it as planned, just with the North Elementary tank. So, we will not be bidding out any other work at this point. I know there's always the other two tanks we've, we've been discussing, but at this point, that's what we're, we're looking at, just the North Elementary work this year. Just kind of FYI, I know we've talked about it before, but estimated costs were just a little under 200,000 is what, what we've estimated, um, which apparently what Dixon's was. It was, um, I think it was right around that, but we, we added some things and, and deleted some things that they had on there, so ended up being close to that. So, just in, I know we've got funds on hand in the, in the water department to take care of that, so...
That's always, that's always been a little secret. Is 200,000 a threshold for public...
Uh, 150.
150.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions or comments, discussion? Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for our department report saying, Jimmy, you're first up.
Back up again. Here we go. There we go. Uh, have you noticed this, uh, last month, we, estimated bills went out, I believe?
We did.
Okay, yeah, yeah. The weather was just not cooperating for that. Uh, it's a little dangerous sending the guys out when it's that extreme cold, plus they're hard to find, and when they get the snow and everything like that. And then also, two, uh, gentlemen from Endeavor had, uh, mentioned that they did hit a water line, uh, and, uh, we kind of had a few little, was not very happy, let's put it that way. Uh, I'm sure they're going to have some changes in some of their operating procedures. What, we told them what is supposed to be done and did not get done, so, uh, they will be getting bills as we get those. And then some of the bills may come late as the spring because there's some asphalt repair off-site and some landscaping to do. So, I told him, uh, we'll get, get you those bills as they, they come to us. We'll get that.
When it's all done and said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, we'll have a detailed thing. We're working with Julie. She has the, uh, uh, cost for, uh, equipment and all that, and then we just saw in the manpower and, and everything associated with that. And, uh, it's probably, it's a lot cheaper from us than it would be like if the gas company, we hit a gas line or something like that, because they, there's so much more money. And we just, uh, charge exactly what's supposed to be charged, do it like that. But that's about the only thing I have, other than, uh, Mark is going to, uh, when he comes up, going to talk to you about the, uh, water tower uptown, some of the things we got, uh, what we're working on, some ideas, and do that. But that's all I have for right now. All right, all right, thank you.
Just a couple of quick items, working on a couple of new projects coming to town that we've been discussing for some time. Um, they're not official yet, so I can't exactly say where they are, what they are, but, um, we are meeting with, uh, representatives from both of those projects, and they do appear to be moving forward, so that's good news. Um, and we'll probably be seeing some of those before Plan Commission and BZA in February and March. So, looking forward to some active spring months coming up. Any questions?
Okay, we're ready for a department report saying Jimmy, you're first up.
Back up again. Here we go. Here we go. Have you noticed this, last month, we estimated bills went out, I believe?
We did.
Okay, yeah, yeah, the weather was just not cooperating for that. It's a little dangerous sending the guys out when it's that extreme cold, plus they're hard to find, and when they get the snow and everything like that. And then also, two gentlemen from Endeavor had mentioned that they did hit a water line, and we kind of had a few little, was not very happy, let's put it that way. I'm sure they're gonna have some changes in some of their operating procedures, what we told them what is supposed to be done and did not get done. So they will be getting bills as we get those. And then some of the bills may come late as the spring because there's asphalt repair off-site and some landscaping to do. So I told him, we'll get you those bills as they come to us. We'll get that.
When it's all done and said?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll have a detailed thing. We're working with Julie, she has the cost for equipment and all that, and then we just saw in the manpower and everything associated with that. And it's probably, it's a lot cheaper from us than it would be like if the gas company, we hit a gas line or something like that, because they, there's much more money, and we just charge exactly what's supposed to be charged, do it like that. But that's about the only thing I have, other than Mark is going to, when he comes up, gonna talk to you about the water tower uptown, some of the things we got, what we're working on, some ideas, and do that. But that's all I have for right now. All right, thanks.
Just a couple of quick items, working on a couple of new projects coming to town that we've been discussing for some time. They're not official yet, so I can't exactly say where they are, what they are, but we are meeting with representatives from both of those projects, and they do appear to be moving forward, so that's good news. And we'll probably be seeing some of those before Plan Commission and BZA in February and March. So looking forward to some active spring months coming up. Any questions for me?
Are they big projects?
Yes. Exciting, big projects. Yes, yes. Thank you for coming back, Gary.
Fire Department.
Before you, I placed our year-end report. Certainly not gonna waste your time by going over it, just point out a few highlights. We had 1,715 runs last year. As always, approximately 80% of them were EMS. The other 20 obviously were fire or other related runs. Just a couple of highlights that I picked out again. A shift was the busiest shift, and there's absolutely no reasoning for that, just that'd be the same as me saying that Wednesday was the busiest day of the week and June was the busiest month. It just, next year it'll be completely different. So it's just, it's just a matter of random numbers, obviously. As far as in the county, we were the fourth busiest department again, Plainfield having 5,700, Avon 49, Brownsburg 37, and then us at 1,700, so we're staying pretty consistent where we are in the grand scheme of things. We did have only, and again, our location really dictates some of these numbers, but our tanker was the busiest tanker in the county. Again, it's a 4,000 gallon tanker, nobody can touch what we have as far as carrying water capacity, so it gets called pretty much all the time.
Recharge the other people?
No, sir. And they don't charge me for coming in and bringing their ladders, so I figured it's a good trade-off. Our grass rig was the busiest of grass rigs. Our TSU, which is our light wagon, the one with the great big light towers, it pretty much goes on every working fire within the county, so it was pretty busy as well for Just as a side note, and I've already taken the time to dog the other chiefs in the county, I was the fourth busiest chief of all the staff chiefs in the county, so, and most of those were inclusive of assistants and things like that, so needless to say, I let Brownsburg and Avon and Plainfield know how much busier I was than them, so that's all I have on my report.
Any questions, Richard?
I have a few other things to address, obviously, I just, the year-end, I just didn't want to take much of your time on that. Today I met with Rich Jensen, Clerk Treasurer, Deputy Clerk Treasurer, and we had an opportunity to discuss, I guess it's our insurance premiums for the workers' comp, and I never really, I hate to say, understood completely how all that worked, and Rich took the time to explain it to all of us. It was a great meeting. We are going to probably change the name of the insurance policy, it's been called the Danville Volunteer Fire Department ever since I can remember, and we're just gonna switch it to the Danville Fire Department. We're just about in that transition phase where we're, we have far, we're gonna have far more full-time people than we do paid-on call. We'll have more part-time staffing than anything, but the way the insurance worked is, he explained how, you know, our full-time staffing, it would pay for their medical injuries, but again, they're not eligible for workers' comp because of the 77 pension, but it does allow workers' comp for the paid-on call and the part-time employees. So it was quite a learning experience, I thought. Thank you, Rich.
It was, Gary. It's the policy that we've questioned the last couple of years, and Laura, you and I talked about it last week, so we were concerned that there was some overlap between center township and the town of Danville and between Downey and the town of Danville on coverages. So Rich came out and called an underwriter, and so all five of us were able to meet and make sure that there isn't any and its coverage that we do need, so...
It was extremely informative. Like I said, it was one of those things, it was a good meeting to be in. The next thing I have, as Jim alluded to, the Hendricks County Communication Center will be out tomorrow at 1:30. What we have discussed, this was Jim's idea, I certainly wasn't smart enough to think of it, the radio antenna that's on the current tower behind my office, he came in and suggested that maybe we move that out to North Elementary. There's already a building out there, it makes perfect sense. It's actually on a higher area, and it may actually eliminate the need for maybe some repeaters, I'm not real sure, but Raycom, Hendricks County Communication Center, their IT people, their director, maybe all, but we're all gonna meet about there at 1:30 and take a look at that, see if that's a functioning place. I have encouraged them, if this is going to be a move, that we wait, obviously, until the tower's painted. There's no sense in scratching up their new paint job by putting wires and antennas on top of the tower, so I meant the other way around. No sense in them having to remove it to paint around it, so. So like I said, I think it's a good thing, they're gonna, I believe the cost will all be on them, they're that intent on trying to get it moved and be seamless and everything. So that, again, you know, we did look at that solution, and that's, I think that's gonna be pretty viable for us. And I'll entertain any questions on that, I know that's been an ongoing topic, so I just wanted to make sure we had it covered and, you know, let you know that we didn't forget or drop the ball on it. Last thing I have, department heads, I sent you all an email, a proposal I had over the weekend. This came from a commercial that I saw while sitting at my house, where one of the soup kitchens was completely packed around the holidays, and then it shows a couple of months later, and the only people are there are the people that are actually there for the soup. There's no volunteers, because everybody tends to volunteer in Thanksgiving, Christmas, and kind of forget about it after that. So the department heads met, and we all agreed that we thought this was a good thing for us to take up. We have decided to take out a town-wide food drive. Tomorrow morning, we'll place totes in every building, and I'm hoping Betty will put it in, when I get ahold of her. Thought she was here, but, and we'll do our social media due diligence there, and ensure that the public's aware that if they want to come in and pay their water bill, they can drop off a can. We're grateful for encouraging our employees that for every day they work, bring a can with you, bring something with you, and throw it in the box. If they wanna, if they want to do a case one day and just be done with it, we're good with that. If they do want to do more than one item per day, we're real good with that. But department heads, we think that this is a good way for us to give back to our community. This'll hit, I think we agreed around mid-February was when we'll take it in, and that should hit them around spring when all the donations that they currently have will start running out, and we're hoping it'll meet a real need. The other thing that I talked to the food pantry about today is when we do drop these off, if any of the department heads that want to have representation, if Public Works wants to have a dump truck, a police car, a fire truck, whatever the case may be, to bring the items to the food pantry and just have a photo op there, we thought that would be a good opportunity as well. The Methodist Church, shared blessings. We've also, we also discussed that if we decide to do this as a continuing project, we don't want to burn our employees out, we don't want to do it once a month, but maybe if we do it once a quarter, maybe also pick up the backpack program where the kids take the food home. We thought we could assist that program as well if we generate enough food through this, so I think it's a, quite honestly, it's a fine example, and I hope you'll take this for what I'm saying of your department heads working together as a whole, and I think it's wonderful, to be honest with you. I was thrilled today that we had 100% participation, so that's all I have.
Be about that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Anything else for Chief Moore?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police water.
I provided a brief annual report. The noteworthy item is that all of our employees now have a Class III license, which matches our Class III major municipal plant, and we used 66% of our capacity last year. Available if you have any questions.
You ready to get that pump?
Sorry?
Something on order for...
We got our rake rehab rebuilt, it's ready to go. It's something we use spring, summer, and fall, so it's ready to go for those months.
Other questions?
All right, thank you.
Mark.
One of these times, I'm gonna have good words to say about this building, but I grew up here, I went to this school, but the cold weather's taken a toll on the building. I've replaced four fans. We've sprung two leaks on the northwest corner of the gymnasium, it's pretty much destroyed the flooring, the walls, so I have Precision coming out to give us a price to replace that unit. A lot of the units on the second floor and in the gym and in the basement are very old. I think they were brought in here in, like, 1986, so they're 35 years old, so you might expect some cost as far as getting some of that stuff repaired. It's also very inefficient. I think it may cost front-end money, but on the back end, I think we'll save money over the long term, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and I'll start Thursday with meeting Precision, and we'll whittle away at it, so. Well, we will start with the CCI building, which is budgeted, but with what needs to be done, we'll eat that up pretty quick, and I've talked to Gary and Laura about those things as they happen, trying to figure out what the best option is, because CCI building is basically for maintenance, it's not for replacement. They'll give me some direction on which way to go with that, maybe there's some options, but until I get the cost on knowing what we need to do, I know the school upstairs has suffered a couple of times, I know when we had the last cold snap, I was up there while they were off, we were off for Christmas break, and I replaced a couple of fan motors, but it was 34 degrees upstairs, and if we continue to have that happen, we're gonna bust some pipes and we're really in trouble, because the whole building is heated and cooled with water. I also found out that the water that's in the system is not conditioned, it doesn't have antifreeze in it, it doesn't have agents to inhibit buildup in the pipes, and we have a lot of calcium in the water, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done. We'll just start with the big problems and work our way through them as much as we can. We can't see inside the pipes, so it's kind of tough, but those units are gonna definitely need to be looked at and see if, talk about replacement instead of repairing them, because the repairs are so old that the repairs are gonna be more expensive than replacing the unit, so. But we don't have any leaks in the roof, the roof's been a really good thing, at least the roof has held in the heat that we do have, so it's not been too bad. And I want to thank Will's guys, Nate and Stan, because when the second leak happened, I was in the middle of moving, and they really jumped up, took care of it, cleaned the water up, let me know what was going on, and I was able to come by after the fact, but they really stepped up, so thanks to Will's guys, appreciate it, Will. But really, that's, I have, there was four building permits issued at Four Oaks today, so the building's kind of slowed down, but it's getting ready to cut loose out there because they just got their plat recorded, and they're, they say that they've sold 50% of the lots already, so we'll see how that turns out. Stormwater's pretty slow, other than all the salt going down the drains and going into the creek, we're good.
And I would like to add one thing along Four Oaks and the stormwater. Barry and I have been battling for probably 18 months with Four Oaks on their stormwater fees, because we do not provide water and sewer to that addition. So we bill the customers monthly for their stormwater, but they talk to each other and decide they're not gonna pay it, is what's happening. So we haven't had any way to collect it, because we can't shut them off, of course. So Barry and I have been working with Nancy Marsh, the county treasurer, someone had the brilliant idea for them to be invoiced along with their semi-annual taxes. So Nancy is going to start doing that for us. So next month, once we get year-end closed and the county gets their year-end closed, Barry and I have a meeting scheduled with Nancy, and hopefully on the May bill, Four Oaks will start being invoiced through their property taxes. So we have solved that, and we have one other property out by Twin Bridges that we're gonna do the same thing.
There's quite a bit of revenue that we're missing out on, but it's so difficult to recover, it's more expensive to recover that cost at this point. So there's probably, and I'm guessing here, there's probably 75 homes out there that are not paying stormwater fees, and everybody else in town is, so it's kind of a big issue. Just for that reason, you know, the money, yeah, but the bigger reason is, is we're not treating people fairly, some people are paying, some people aren't. So that's one way to take care of it, is to attach it to their tax bill.
We talked about that, Barry and I talked about that. Once we meet with Nancy and see what our procedure's gonna be and get a plan in place, we'll present that to the council.
I'll try to keep you all posted about what's going on in the building, if there're large expenses, and obviously I'll be talking to Gary every day, so I'll make sure everybody's aware, and if you guys have input on what we need to do, you know, obviously we'll do that. Thank you.
All right, in front of you, you have your town council report. So Winterland was awesome, record numbers this year, we're looking to do some bigger, better things next year, talking about maybe some real decisions next year on growth and how we operate things. So we're gonna be looking into that this week, we have a meeting on Wednesday, just kind of going over with what we've done before and making some decisions for the future, so. We just finished up with DAC days, we have 60-plus members that signed up during the week, which is pretty good. Membership's at an all-time high, we're still growing, which is great, we haven't really ever plateaued, which I'm surprised, and we still have plans to grow to the future, so everything's going great there. We've added some new fitness classes and some other things, too, which seem to be helping things as well. Tonight we have the park board meeting immediately following this meeting, so you're welcome to attend, any of you, stay for a couple more hours. And then also, the park board wanted me to bring up to you the amphitheater. As you're aware, last meeting I told you that the amphitheater was struck by a tree, which caused a lot of damage. We finally have totals on it, it's $36,000 worth of damage, and they wanted me to pursue the option of possibly having a permanent structure. So I went out, got some estimates, it's about $90,000 for the permanent structure, and then they said about 50% of what the cost is, is about what it takes to build it, so about $140,000, $120,000 to $140,000. So they wanted me to ask you if you were interested in the permanent structure. We would like a permanent structure, but we know the $36,000 versus $150,000, they're pretty far from each other, but we kind of wanted to know a consensus. Actually, all of them are here, too, and if any of you want to chime in, feel free. No? They wrap it up decent? So the current structure is, I mean, you could ask Public Works, it's scary to put up, and I know we'd be getting kind of like a giant Band-Aid on what we have, but the actual structure is still 30 years old. It scares me every time I put it up. Now it'll have better parts, but it's still the same, you know, 30-year-old bones on a 30-year-old pad anchored by 30-year-old anchors. So we just wanted to kind of see what your thoughts were and see if you, I mean, we have some cool ideas, but I didn't want to get too deep into it without kind of knowing, you know, that you guys are on board with it. You have something, Ken? Yeah, yeah, just really, what's your thoughts, is really what I want to know.
Couple of questions. That damage, can, is that insured?
Yeah, that's why, so they will give us the money if they want, or they'll do the repair, and so we've asked for them to wait while we find out what does everyone want to do, because it's not very often we're gonna have a chance to put, you know, have $36,000 go towards this. Yeah.
The other thing is, if we... The other thing is, if we decided to go that way with the solid structure, can we sell the old one?
I don't think so. It's thirty years old, nobody would insure it, probably. Yeah. Add the directions to a newer version of what they have, and they'd do it completely different now, too. Yeah, yeah, Werner Shelters.
Is the thirty-six, is the hundred and fifty thousand net of the thirty-six in addition?
Uh, no. It's, so it would be like, think, I got a price, but it's, give or take, would be like ninety-four would be the total cost to us.
That's a way better number than that.
Yeah, because of the thirty-six thousand that would come in.
I got this to say, I'm not opposed to it, but I need to see what other projects. To something that we just heard.
Yeah.
Heard of it, and I can't just, you know, a hundred thousand. It's gonna come from, or, you know.
Yeah.
I'm certainly listening to what you're talking about. Already know.
It doesn't make that much. It's a lot of years of playing house.
You missed the end of it, to sell.
Oh, to sell, okay.
I waited eighteen years for this.
We, my hope is that we work on the host budget next month. So that's something that we can put as a part of the process of our priority projects for the host budget for this year. And if this would be considered, you know, like Mike said, we'll have to see what projects are in the pipeline. But this could be considered as a part of the priority projects. Maybe part of the funding coming from host priority projects?
Yeah, I mean, we can figure out some options, maybe an A, B, C option, you know? And for us, we're really trying to bring the amphitheater back to life and make it a staple in the community. We had some dreaming meetings and a park board retreat where, you know, our focus needs to be on bringing that to life. If we're gonna have a nice facility, we wanna make sure that we're using it. So that's when we talked about adding more free events and maybe more, you know, artsy entertainment kind of events. And we can figure out to make them self-funded so they would be free. And then it just benefits everyone.
Ms. Glover, will you use that amphitheater for your tribute bands?
Yeah, we're partnering with the chamber.
And maybe some of the money from that, we could direct into the solid building, if we so.
And these six shows won't affect Summer Sounds on the square?
We've already talked to Summer Sounds, Krista. I talked to her and make sure that whatever we do is not in rival anyways. Make sure we're not on the same time and make sure we stay. Like, we wanted to go with the tributes because they're more of the arts and the local bands. And then we also talked about maybe even tying some of ours in. The movies, we were gonna maybe tie into the First Friday Cruise Inn so that when you're done with the cruise inn, you could come down. And I think the first movie, we were talking about doing like Smokey and the Bandit or something like that. So they could come down and drive all their nice cars down there and show them off. And then it would be, you know, kinda like a double event, could be really cool. Yeah. Yeah. Before I approached the chamber, I talked to Krista about it, and I just wanna make sure that we're cool. Because, you know, I don't wanna be in, you know, we're not trying to compete, we don't wanna take away from each other. So, you know, we're not looking at as, like, her bands are maybe more A-class and ours are more B-class. And going with the tribute, you're really going for that, you know, area. We talked about some cool ideas and maybe even doing, you know, with the concerts, maybe Jimmy Buffett at the pool. And we could do an adults night. There's a couple of other options that were really cool, something futuristic and something that could kinda benefit a different genre of people. Because we don't really hit that crowd as far as the Parks Department goes. And that's, you know, we'd like to hit those different age groups and keep it diverse.
I'm open for discussion on it, but it's a lot of money to spend for a seasonal, something seasonal for the town. And when I look at your things like that that have happened before, they're not very well attended. Even if it is free, you know, what's gonna be our return on investment? So how we try to get a return on investment on that. So I think there needs to be further talk on, you know, the ROI of it and the attendance you've had in the past over smaller B-bands and things like that. It all sounds good and well, you know, on paper, but in reality, I think we need to have a lot more discussion on it.
Yeah.
I'd agree with Mike, see more information about it. Where you can save, maybe input.
So you're generally interested, we'll call it, for me to go back and do more research.
More information.
Okay.
Cool. I'll just add one quick thing on that. We were in your seat, you know, what, about a month or so ago? So, and we struggled with that same thing, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
You know, what do we do with it? But we need to spend a lot of money on something that's kind of a quick fix that we also have some safety concerns with. Tearing it up, tearing it off and on all the time, you know, for the season. So we looked at that also as a safety thing. But just looking at enhancing, you know, the hometown feel as our mission statement is. Trying to, you know, give back to the town and everything. We're trying, okay, how can we enhance that? And so that was one of the things that we looked at was, okay, this might be an opportunity. So we struggled with it, and then we thought, well, we need to bring that to the council and let them chew on it for a while. So we're obviously not asking for an answer tonight, but we want, we have the next step to bring it to you, at least to consider it and see how we work.
Exactly, I was about to say, here comes the engineer.
Thank you. Wait, wait, oh, sorry.
This is not the first time that a permanent structure's been pitched. Was one pitched back in the late eighties.
Around when this guy was.
Tell us about that. When you were reading it off the stone tablet, go ahead.
John Keely from HNTB, he's nearing firm that laid out long plan, wastewater plan, together rendering, ability down there, test of Long Valley. So, you know, I asked Will if he could. Some of the things that were to be included was, number one, the acoustic value, building a facility, able to project area. So maybe a green room, something, age people. I was down there one time for a play, and it was crazy behind. So, I think a permanent structure. But you're gonna get several different prices from several different firms. But I think you lay out what you're wanting to do.
Hundred percent agree. I think it'd be, it'll be beneficial, but. Is a hundred thousand dollars a good number on me?
At one fifty to two hundred, is that, is the thirty-six insurance claim?
The ninety-four would be minus the insurance.
Ninety-four, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. The only hard part is, I do have a window, I think, with how long I have with the insurance company. Cool. I'm looking at Rich here, see if he can help me out. Good talking to Ben, who's like the outsourced, yeah. Yeah, will you help me out on that? Okay, cool. So maybe next meeting? I've got a lot of the stuff already, it's just I haven't put it together, made it pretty. Yeah, I totally agree. Wham-bam.
I'm trying to help you out. It's gotta be worth three fifty.
Okay, two other things?
I was gonna say, that's the deal.
Was that a vote?
You don't need that.
He only has two and I'd have to abstain.
Will also asked, since it's on the IP board, if it was not on our list, and sorry about that. Reason why is he late.
Can I ask him one more thing about the park?
Sure.
During the week, I've been driving through the park there. I see everybody sliding down that hill, having a great time. I see a lot of parents standing in front of the trees and the basketball things. I remember in the past, sometimes on the news, Sonny Bono died going down a hill and hit a tree. And I've heard several times that people have been on slides like that and killed themselves. I think it's a great thing for the city. Is there anything we can do to make that safer? And if somebody did kill themselves, are we, of course, we'd probably be responsible for that.
We meet the insurance limitations by having a sign up there. I think ten years ago, we had to put a sign up there because someone got hurt, you know, sled at your own risk, blah, blah, blah. I wasn't the one who put basketball goals at the bottom. I think that probably was a bad idea, whoever did that. But if I remove them, they're probably not going back in.
So what I mean is, I think it's a good thing for the city. I think if we made it better, they'd be swamping to that. And.
You have hay bales around them now, like?
Yeah, but the problem is, is they get wet and then they turn into ice blocks. So it's like, it's a bigger.
The basketball court gets used a lot more than the sled hill.
Yes, very true, very true. So it's hard to like, say, you know, can you build a ramp to where at the bottom, you peel to the right?
Safer barrier.
I see they have straw there.
Yeah.
And sometimes the straw falls apart.
Yeah. We try to replace it as much as we can.
Put some barriers just between those two trees and those three basketball. At the least, maybe do that.
But it's gonna get hard. What are you gonna put there? Like you said, it's gonna get rainy and wet and be like an ice block.
Yeah.
I mean, there could be something we found in the ground.
Sled at your own risk.
Net that calls and catches them.
I can do whatever you guys want.
I just brought this up.
Yeah, uh, let me think of that. Because I think we could put something out to the listener and see if anybody else does anything to block trees.
I guess one, we could have a problem with somebody getting hurt there.
Yeah, I mean.
And two, the city really likes it.
The trees, we could probably relocate. As an option, we could probably relocate some of the trees, but there are also erosion control on the.
Anyways, I just thought I'd bring it up for thought.
Okay. So in front of you, I have a spreadsheet there. So this is probably like six to eight months' worth of meetings. And the IT committee got together, one of the items, oh, the big picture is, we wanna work together on more things and be collaborative and bring the town departments together. So one of those things was bringing the printing services together. We all kinda have our own contracts, you know, where the department has a bigger printer, you have a contract, you get service maintained, blah, 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 blah. So we put them all together, packaged the deal, this is what we came up with, we saved a couple hundred dollars. And then some departments actually are getting new equipment. We're gonna have full service through the same company. So now on our phone list, we'll be able to use one choice to funnel through for any printing needs, so they can fix everything via online. They have a twenty-four hour response time. All the department heads said yes to it, which is awesome. And any other questions? We're just looking for a consensus, or do we need an actual vote? Because it's a contract.
Just a consensus because of the size of the agreement, that's it? And then the council president will sign.
So nothing really changes, per se. It's just all those go to each department, whoever's, whatever changes are for your department, you're responsible for it. So financially, it's the same as what we've been doing now, it's just we're using one company instead of five.
Save money?
Yes, we save two hundred dollars per month. And we have new equipment. Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours.
Yeah, and they have a rep here locally. I think he actually lives in Danvo.
Who's it through?
The same company, I believe, you used Integrity.
What the school. Need that service. Eight, number one. Need half.
Yep, that's what we were.
And the other nice thing will be, we will be able to print anywhere. Because like, for example, my printer went down last week and I couldn't print anywhere else except my office. So now I can send it down to the Town Hall Administration Office and go pick it up.
It's gonna save us on fax, scanners, we're actually reducing the amount of printers we have because now we can scan all to one area. We can pass code so that, you know, you'll know who's using the most printing. It's streamlining us probably fifteen years ahead.
We already have funding for current copies.
Yeah, really, nothing changes in that, we're just using one service and we're being billed by one service. And now everyone knows who to call when they have the issues.
Saving two hundred dollars.
Yeah, and saving two hundred dollars a month.
No more e-strike sheets, I'm for it.
Yeah, sorry. Even when I printed out legal, it was like, ah.
Good idea.
Thank you.
How it works, huh, folks? Half an hour.
First of all, I'd like to welcome Gary back. Not one person's welcoming him back tonight. Welcome back, Gary. We, down at the Department of Public Works, have been doing a little adjusting this month. We've been working on some trucks. We've had one issue with Stratford Ridge come up. We actually have mud pumping up through the blacktop. At this time, we have cones on it to block it off to keep people from driving through it. I have talked with Barry today and we've talked about Band-Aids versus getting it fixed right. I think we both agree that it needs drainage pipe put under it to keep the water out from under the road to make the mud to start with. We have done some plowing of snow. Believe it or not, we've had a few snowflakes this month. And basically, that's it for this month. Any questions?
I, I need to talk here for a few minutes, I'm sorry. I sent out, we finished payroll late today, so I'm really sorry. But about three o'clock this afternoon, I sent you guys an email. The overtime for this payroll for the last two weeks is close to nine thousand dollars. For the whole entire 2018 year, we budget twenty-five thousand in overtime for the Streets Department. As you guys will recall, when we named Julie and Ray as the interim superintendents, at that time, we decided not to increase their pay or do anything until we met again. And Ray himself, because of all the hours that he has worked, he worked over forty hours of overtime in the last two weeks. And the guys, all of the guys worked two-hundred-and-sixty-point-five hours of overtime in the last two weeks.
And we thank you all for that.
Yes, 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 absolutely.
You look like you hadn't slept in days. So thank you.
It's been a day or two.
But we need to figure out how we're going to proceed because we're halfway through our overtime budget and this is the second pay of the year. So from the treasurer's standpoint, I need direction from you guys on how we're gonna address Julie and Ray's salary. All of the other superintendents and chiefs for the Town of Danville receive comp time, they do not receive overtime. And of course, you know, Ray's worked a lot of hours and is gonna be paid for over 40 hours of overtime, this payroll. So I need direction from you guys on how you want to proceed. And how we're gonna do this, because this is January, we have February and March to get through weather-wise, and then we'll have the concerts on the squares and the things that we pay overtime for as part of our budgeting process and I'm concerned.
Is this something we could talk about?
I would, I need direction from you guys on if Ray is going to receive overtime. Julie's always received comp time, so Julie's not an issue, because Julie's working as many hours as well. She just is receiving comp time. I need direction from you guys on where to go with Ray's salary. You know, already payroll ended on Friday, so Saturday started a new payroll. So we're already in overtime and we had a holiday yesterday.
Why does Julie receive comp?
Because she was administrative assistant and that's how Rob had her set up. Julie's never received overtime or hasn't for the last several years, go ahead Julie. Okay.
Will, go ahead Tom.
The plowing, we just had two snowstorms since January, correct? Two big ones?
Two, two big ones hit and.
I noticed that a lot of people on chatter were saying that streets weren't plowed that well. I also noticed that some streets were lacking, opposed to what they were last year. Is that because you don't have enough time? Overtime is being used? Do you?
The racing, it, overtime, the last couple big snows have been on the weekends after the men have already worked 40 hours.
So we don't have enough men to take care of these?
Right now, we are missing Rob on one shift, I am working two shifts, trying to have a supervisor on the shift. And then we had an employee quit, which was Jay McIntyre, he quit, so right now, we're actually two men short. On plowing. So we're trying to make up the difference by working more overtime.
There is a big difference, I would assume, when a storm does fall on, there is a big difference, I would assume, when a storm does fall on a weekend.
Yes.
They're not eating it up during their normal 40-hour week, so.
Or after hours and it brought down more than it should. I was out all, every morning on the streets just to check. And although it's not crystal like in the past, you know, everything because it's been through the week, it's snowing during the day, I thought you'd done a very good job.
Thank you Dennis. Well, that, that, that is true. On that particular one, it, it was my call and I was setting on the radar, watching a strip of rain coming down, ice on the other side of it. We were right inside the rain and I held off pre-treating with salt until the rain stopped. And then as soon as the rain stopped and it started to go to ice, we already had trucks rolling and that's where we used salt. And the salt for, for the pre-treat, I thought did a good job. And then into that, we got hit with two inches of snow right on top of that.
And what a lot of people may not realize is 36th Main Thoroughfare through town is a US highway, a state highway, the state should plow that.
They don't.
I know, you, you guys do it every years.
Once, once or twice through town and they're done.
Right, but for years, you guys have done that and it was, it was perfect through every storm we had.
Yeah.
And, and we have to have them plowed. This is just something that, the struggle for, we have to plow the rest of the winter.
I, I mean, I, I, I can work, I, I can work with Jenny on this, but if I'm sending guys home, they get their 40 hours in and send them home. You have a storm on Wednesday, your streets are gonna be bad. I'm already two men short.
Because if you look at, I mean, Ray himself has worked 45 hours of overtime, that's a huge part of our budget, you know, that's a huge part of this $9,000, is what I'm trying to say. So if we increase his salary and he receives comp time or whatever you guys decide to do, that is gonna solve a lot of it. Because, you know, at the rate that these guys make, and especially Ray, because he's in the leadership role at 45, you know, hours.
I agree, and that didn't have anything to do with the fact it snowed on the weekend.
Right, right, right. I mean, when you're, you know, running a department, you're, you know, and we have cases like this.
First thing I'd say, it sets some interviews to see his role.
Right, and.
Uh, I think you and I, we need to sit down and have. Ray worked the hours crazy.
Absolutely.
In my opinion. We need to advertise, I think we have to advertise. Here one more. Three workers. Are down one man, two, but still the one. That was my third part, move on with. So that would be my recommendation, get paid as a.
Okay.
You and I have also talked. Differential pay.
Right.
Fully and share the rest. Get input.
Sure.
But that would be my recommendation that maybe allow, pay overtime, Julie gets some comp. Whether's the weather.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with, I'm good with that, but I.
Unless you guys know something.
No, I, I think everything says great, there's no doubt it's getting paid, but I, I do agree with Jenny that we could find ourselves in the same, we probably do, whether it's interim or not, we, we need to make, I think we do need to make some type of a decision of. Is it, is it, is it overtime or is it?
We do.
Yeah.
Because I'm, we do, because I ran reports late today and we're gonna be in this exact same situation in two weeks. And so we're gonna be looking at another $9,000 if we don't do something. So then we're at $21,000 because last payroll, we had $3,000 in overtime, because there was a snowstorm then. So, and you can't go over your budget in your general fund, you cannot. We would have to transfer, there's no exceptions. So we would have to transfer, we would have to steal from Peter to pay Paul. Or we're gonna have to do another additional appropriation. But again, this is our general fund, so there's really no money. So we're going to have to do something. And I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but I mean, we just are gonna have to do something or somebody is gonna lose here. I would suggest that starting, I absolutely feel like Ray should be paid for all of his hours worked overtime. I absolutely think we process his payroll and, but I say, starting from this last Saturday, if Ray's in agreeance, which I'm not gonna put you on the spot right now, we can talk about that. You can talk to the council about that, but for him to start receiving comp time, the difference between what he made as the assistant superintendent and the foreman and the difference between what Rob makes, made as a superintendent. We split that difference between Julie and Ray and increase both of their salaries for the interim time and they both receive comp time, is my suggestion.
I've already worked overtime.
So that.
Sunday, Monday, I've already worked overtime.
That's what, that's what my point is here, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna have ourselves in the exact same situation.
I don't, I would say we would.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I, I'm, I'm not taking any overtime away from a guy, I mean, if, if we put something in place, it'd be from now, it's not gonna be retroactive.
I agree, I agree, 100%.
Whenever he's done, he gets paid and then moving forward, what you said is.
Right.
Is agreeable.
I mean, even if we started tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, I mean, he gets paid for his overtime he's worked this weekend, there yesterday was a holiday, he gets paid for that overtime. We start it, you know, in the minutes, 8:00 AM tomorrow morning till the end of payroll, which will be a week from Friday.
8:00 AM, he gets that half, right, they both get that half.
Whatever you guys decide, I'm just throwing out numbers, but.
I like it.
Yeah, we, we started at a certain time and we.
You okay with this? I'm okay.
Yes, that's what we'll have to do, I'll have to come back with an amendment to the salary ordinance, but we can go ahead and state in the minutes that this is how we're gonna proceed and then we'll, I'll have to come back with an amendment to the salary.
Get it clear, so we're all on the same page here. Okay? Pay the overtime that's already due. Be in agreement? Comp time, starting tomorrow morning?
Whenever you guys decide.
And not overtime, great.
But you know what, I think we can't, we can't.
That, that's the next thing.
Because in the middle of a pay period?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're just gonna have to, we can't do anything.
At the beginning of the next pay period.
Right, right. So he'll have to get, he will have to get overtime for this whole payroll, because we can't start it.
You know, it's a unique situation, it's not something that's gonna change. You okay with that or not? I'm okay with that.
So I'll bring back an amendment.
Got that, now, the third part of this equation, and it's just complicated, is difference in pay. Okay, my suggestion is actually what you suggested. Difference by two. So. We make that retroactive. We ask them to take all those responsibilities.
We can't, what we'll have to do is make it effective.
Start of the next pay.
When the salary, right, the next pay period, when, when you guys approve the salary ordinance amendment.
That's about all we can do is try to make it fair and balanced. Is that agreeable, everyone? You'll come back with the.
I'll come back with the exact figures and so you'll know what they'll both be making and we'll amend the salary ordinance and then.
Okay with this?
Yes and no.
What's the yes, what's the no?
The yes is, I'm not here to make a million dollars dead, I would have went to work at Indianapolis 41 years ago. I'm here because I want to take care of Danville. Tom, you said that you've got reports of bad streets. I'd like for you to contact me and we'll sit down and talk about where those are so that I can take care of them. Okay?
Sure.
Not in an open meeting, if you'll give me a phone call, we'll take care of the problem. Okay? Fair enough.
Anything else for Ray?
Because I think the roads are in pretty good shape.
I'm, I'm good, I feel good, thank you, I feel better, I can breathe again.
Have anything to add? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Ray.
Thanks Ray.
Thank you.
Police.
Thank you, Mr. President and town council members. First of all, I want to say, Gary, it's good to have you back in your seat at your table and be able to say hi to you in the office this morning and also want to thank Laura for the job she's done in the roles since you've been out ill, but glad you're feeling at least good enough to, to get yourself in here. Before I address the stats in a few categories for the year of 2016, just want you to know that our officers have been doing a great job all year, but looking at, at December, and I won't, I won't stress a whole lot about December, where we can move on to the yearly stats, but everything in the categories of driving while intoxicated, criminal arrest, traffic arrest, case reports, runs, all those are up and even some have doubled what the average was for the previous year. And, and it's just a good stress by our squad sergeants and people that are in charge of these squads and keeping their officers focused. And then they did a great job in, in December. What I want you to take a look at in the handout that I gave you is the stats for 2017 compared to what we accomplished in 2016. At the beginning of 2017, I really stressed an increase in visibility of our units being throughout the town. And I think the result of that has been, again, we've made more criminal arrests this year, we've made more traffic arrests, driving while intoxicated arrests, we've taken more case reports and had more calls for service. In 2017, if you will look on the second page where it says traffic stops, in 2017, we had, and this is collective as, as a, as a department, we had 4,176 traffic stops, that is 1,903 more traffic stops for the year than what we had in 2016. If you drop down to warrant service, in 2017, we served 240 warrants, which is 75 more warrants than we had the previous year. Total runs, we had 9,937 total runs compared to 8,719 in 2016, was an increase of 1,218. Our case reports went up 81, we had 911 for 2017. Our criminal arrests were up 133 from the previous year, we had 238 criminal arrests in 2017. Traffic arrests, we had 100 in 2016, we had 206 traffic arrests for 2017. And if you, if you compare that 206 traffic arrests compared to the total number of stops that we made, decisively towards the warning that, that were issued, which has been a goal, is to have some public relations with people, informing the laws, and it's not always just about an arrest. Some people, most people can get the idea just with a warning. Our driving while intoxicated or OWI arrest, we're up 23 for the year, in 2016, we had 31, this year, we had 54. Which brings the total, a total arrests that we made, it's 239 more than 2016 and we had a 264, excuse me, 244 total arrests for, for the year. Again, it's our officers out there doing the job, being visible, we've got a great dedicated department to that. It, it's not me doing it, these aren't my stats, but these are the other guys that's working the road. I'd be glad to answer any kind of questions that you might have at this time.
Okay, deep breath, kids. Go. Public comment. Any other public comment? All right, let's go around the room, Gary. Okay, great. Okay, great.
Right now, my answer's...
(laughing). A round and a half meeting, that's rare.
Yeah, no kidding, could've come in later today, but I'm glad to be back, logically and physically, I think it's good for me to be back. Missed a lot of the social interrogatories, the department heads, and all of that, so, do not wish this disease on anyone. Being cooped up in a hospital, in a rehab, in a home, wheelchairs, and everything else, it, it was tough. So, anyway, we will get the position, public works superintendent and other personnel addressed, it's a simple matter, so, but, thanks to all those that wished me well, came to visit me, they didn't sneak anything into the facility at all, but, nonetheless, I appreciate them being there.
No, thank you, I appreciate you guys working through Public Works with me in the Street Department, and, I hate to put that on you like that, but I appreciate your guys' help.
Help.
Thank you.
Glad to have Gary back.
Thank you.
Yes.
Welcome back, Gary. Forty-one years being a sidekick or an assistant, you've been doing it for a long time, with all the curveballs you got thrown you this week, Ray, first time in charge, I'm impressed, thank you.
Yeah, same thing, welcome back, Gary, I think Ray's did a great job. Or stepped up, did a great job.
He did.
Well, I like a little sentiment, you know, step up the plate, and have this... Feel a little bit more skinny on us.
Am, I've dropped, it's damn good.
Thanks to the department heads, I know this, this weather, when it hits, everybody pitches in, and, and it's a lot better. Saturday, I drove my wife up to Crawfordville, and the roads in Crawfordville were terrible. Tweeted about it. Our roads are just better than theirs. Also, for those of you that don't know, I've been talking with department heads quite a bit, I have changed it a little bit, you know, what I hope is possible. I will be getting... By the end of February. All right, claim docket.
You approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Claim docket is passed, we are adjourned, park board, give us about 5, 10 minutes.